Prior to calling the meeting to order, I would ask council and staff in the chamber to all stand in the moment of silence in the last of all accounts to George Trump. Thank you. I will now call a meeting to order, and I'll call for the adoption of the agenda of the eighty-eighth meeting.
Salute.
Moved by Mayor Palmer, seconded by Councilor Compton-Hobbs, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, carried unanimously. I understand we have three delegations, and the first delegation is... On the phone? Okay. The name?
Elizabeth, sorry.
Okay. Elizabeth, can you still hear us?
Yeah, you're clear.
Okay, good. Yeah, the floor is yours. Before you do that, I'll get Councilor Becky to read out the rules regarding a delegation.
Thank you for watching. In accordance to creating friendly and approachable environment for delegates to meet with the council, it's recommended that the public have followed good Spain one, notify the town manager or his descendant of their intention at least thirty minutes before the meeting, providing their name and contact information, and make it known of the issues that they wish to convey so that the town manager may present it to the attention of the mayor and council members before the council meeting begins. The mayor and council has the right to limit the discreet number of delegates' presentation before each council meeting. Two, at the time and notification, delegates given ten minutes maximum to discuss their concerns or issues. After the presentation, the mayor and council members may ask questions or make comments on the information presented. In three, in consideration for the length of council meeting, delegates may wish to bring forth their issues, concerns, in a written request that includes the subject of the presentation, name and contact information for either the mayor and council member or town manager to respond by a letter. The twelfth council encourages the public to meet with the mayor and council members to bring their concerns or issues, while at the same time we ask that you be respectful when presenting your issues or concerns in a friendly tone and environment to converse on any of the town's topic of discussion or concerns. And I would like to add that I'll be watching the clock, sir, and when it comes to one minute, I will just jump in and say you have one minute left.
Okay, Elizabeth, the floor is yours. It's good to proceed.
Thank you for the overview of the rules and regulations. I provided my contact information as well as my name probably about a week ago. And my major sort of concern in regard to a petition that I brought to you during this council meeting is that down at Pearl Place, which is predominantly sort of, I guess you could say marginalized or individuals who have difficult sort of housing needs live there, and like there's a large prevalence of children who play there, who live there. And there's a playground and also a basketball court. And one of the sort of major sort of concerns I have is the safety of the children and the families, especially during the summer months, because the road through there is actually used almost as a thoroughfare, and people speed through there. And there's nothing there to sort of prevent vehicles from speeding. There's nothing, no speed bumps, there's no sort of like flashing, flashing speed sign to indicate that you're going too fast. There's no crosswalk with a flashing sort of crosswalk sign. And my major sort of concern here is that just probably about twenty years ago or so, there was actually a child who died there who got hit by a vehicle. His name was Earl, I can't remember his first name, but he passed away from that. And I just wanted to highlight from my perspective, something has to be put in to reduce sort of people's speed going through Pearl Place, whether that's a speed bump on both sides of the entrance to Pearl Place, and also perhaps a speedometer or something that flashes to show your, how fast you're going, and also sort of a crosswalk for children to go across on, because children are biking there, they're on scooters, they're playing ball, they're going to the playground. And so these kinds of things, I think, need to be understood, and people don't necessarily always understand that, you know, you do have rights and there are responsibilities to make sure that, you know, children play safely, and hopefully we can kind of, you know, create an opportunity to do that. And people in the community sign the petition, and they understand and are actually very supportive of the idea of speed bumps and also something to slow down traffic and to protect the children from oncoming vehicles when they're outside playing, especially in the summer, and that this could be instituted annually. So that's my sort of view in terms of like my perspective and what I've heard, and I think it's pretty clear in the petition as well. What I said is basically what's in the petition, but I'm open to any questions that you guys have.
Okay, well, we don't normally get into a discussion or a debate when people do bring forward a delegation, but your points are well taken, and I'm not sure if I'm breaking rules, but just to add to what you said, I'm also told by people who live on Markland and on the other street that a lot of people drive through Pearl Place as a shortcut to get from Markland Street up to the post office and to the other street there. So there's no doubt it's a serious concern, and I guess, Randy, we've heard the delegation, can you sit down with your staff and DJ and to see what we can do in order to alleviate speeding through the section of town that the lady has outlined her concerns for there?
Yes, Your Worship, I'll do that. I know that in the near future, we will be looking at all the areas that are contemplated for speed bumps and traffic calming measures. So in the next, sometime, hopefully this week, we'll get at that.
Okay. So Elizabeth, you've heard what the council has directed our staff to do, and Randy, when you do, after you go down, you'll inform council of your decision, but can you also inform the person who brought the concern forward as to what an answer might be for that part of town?
Yes, I will, Your Worship.
Can I just ask you one question?
Sure.
Elizabeth, Councilor Jackie Compton-Hobbs, just a quick question. There used to be a crosswalk by the playground there, there's not one there anymore, no?
No, there's nothing there for children to walk across in the crosswalk. There's no like, you know, where you can actually press the crosswalk sign and it flashes so the kids can go back and forth that way. There's nothing there. It's just sort of, yeah, it's just like a little highway, basically, people speeding through there quickly, you know, it's a marginalized area, and people don't really like respect it, I guess, or I don't know, it's just very dangerous.
So there's nothing on the road either, right? Nothing painted on the road?
No, nothing.
Okay.
And signage, are there signings down there? Elizabeth, Bert Palmer here, is there any signage down there?
There is a sign, like when you're coming in off of Court Real Road, and then you're driving towards the basketball court, there's a sign that says like, "Children at Play, Drive Slowly," but people don't listen to that, right? They don't even look at it. It's not something like, you know, in different places, they have the flashing lights, if you're going over forty, it flashes red to indicate that you're going too fast. Even a speed bump, I think, on both sides would really slow people down from just using it as like a highway.
Okay, thank you.
Elizabeth, we've instructed our staff here to look into your concern you brought forward, and hopefully within the next short little while, hopefully we'll have a solution that's something that you'll be comfortable with and most of the people who live in that area.
Okay, great, thank you. And if you have any questions or anything like that, please feel free to give me a call. If you need any further sort of information or anything like that, I'm sure people in Pearl Place would provide that information if needed. And if you could just, if I could somehow be updated in regards to what's going to happen, I don't know the whole process, but it would be great just to be notified about what is really going to be done to protect the community and the children in that area.
Okay, thank you. And as I've already instructed the town engineer, that as soon as they make a decision to notify you of what that decision is.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to our second delegation, Michelle Parsons, and before we turn the floor over to you, I'll ask Councilor Becky to read the rules and regulations regarding a delegation.
Thank you, Your Worship. In the courts, creating a friendly and approachable environment for delegates to meet with the council, it's recommended that the public have followed good Spain, one, notify the town manager or his descendant of their intention at least thirty minutes before the meeting, providing their name and contact information, make it known of the issues that they wish to convey so that the town manager may present it to the attention of the mayor and council members before the council meeting begins. The mayor and council has the right to limit at discreet the number of delegates' presentation before each council meeting. Two, at the time and notification, delegates given ten minutes maximum to discuss their concerns or issues. After the presentation, mayor and council members may ask questions or make comments on the information presented. Three, in consideration for the length of council meetings, delegates may wish to bring forth their issues, concerns, in a written request that includes the subject of the presentation, name and contact information for either the mayor and council member or town manager to respond by a letter. Twelfth council encourages the public to meet with the mayor and council members to bring their concerns or issues, while at the same time we ask that you be respectful when presenting your issues or concerns in a friendly tone and environment, converse on any of the town's topic of discussion or concerns. And I would like to add, Mayor, that one item, that when you're, I would be watching the clock for ten minutes, and when it comes to one minute left, I'm going to go like this with my hand single one to let you know that you got one minute left. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Michelle, the floor is yours.
Hi, my name is Michelle Parsons, and I'm the owner of Lavender Upholstery slash Lose Designs. My sister is here today to help me because I have a hearing disability. I want to address council today about a stop order that was served to our business on May twenty-first at five p.m. Friday afternoon. I was very confused of what was happening here, and this is causing me undue hardship for me and my family. We had no idea when, how, or where this happened. I had an email from Brian Johnsons on April the twelfth, two thousand twenty-one, on concerns he had relating to my business, to which I responded immediately as requested, as how we could work together to resolve any concerns. Then April the thirteenth, I received an email asking if I would be available for a meeting the following and choosing, to which I replied, yes. Then I would, that I would be available to meet. The email was from Brian Johnson, copying D.J. Elliott, Randy Dillon, Constable Larry Baker, and Nadine McCully. April the nineteenth is another email. I was advised that due to scheduling conflicts, the meeting had to be rescheduled, and that I would be advised as soon as a new date was available. I was also advised I should send an email regarding the new regulations and ask what they consider when working with the town to resolve any issues. So April the twenty-third, I sent an email requesting consideration under the new two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-eight development regulations that were adopted by the town. I was told that they were held up because in St. John's. Can council act on regulations that they adopted? I wasn't sure how to answer this. Or should, or could any matter be deferred until the new regulations could be used or discretionary powers used? All questions I asked myself. I never received a new date. I never received any response regarding the new regulations and if they could be applied. The next thing I knew, a stop order is dropped off my house, May twenty-first, Friday, five o'clock. Me and my family were shocked and devastated. At this time, we had thought the town would be working with us because we were led to believe the town would work with us to resolve this issue so our family can continue to earn a living. Later, we were told by some council and staff that if the new regulations already adopted by the town were in place, this would have never happened. Then the minister's officer, minister's office advised me today that under section four oh four, the town could delegate a discretionary order using the new development regulations until the new act comes down and allows us to operate. They said an order can be delegated using the new two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-eight Urban Rural Development Planning Act regulation using section four oh four of the Municipality's Act, and that the new development actions do not need to be signed up by a minister's office to do this. I was advised by the minister's office to ask you this question. What do I need from us so we can reopen today? The market we serve is niche, skin upholstery, seal skin. We're the only company in Canada that offers that. Aboriginal artists, we sell their products, some imported items for the U.K. and the community, fishing bags, which we've been doing for a long time, with the exception of imported items for our U.K. community, custom t-shirts, masks, and other custom works. My husband sells many of our custom works. I'm so disappointed it got to this stage because my email exchange with the town said they would work with me. We have spent a lot of money, and now we're standing to lose everything. We thought we were offering properly as an extension of our business. With onset of COVID, we decided to use our accessory building so we can keep everybody safe, to follow the social distancing rules, and observing many other businesses in town, we felt we were operating on the same footprint. All was fine. We've been in operation for over five months with no concerns until now. I also understand the decision to issue the stop work order was made by a committee. I wanted to ask the question, can it, such a serious decision like this, to be made by a committee? I thought it had to be ratified by the council. I was told under the Urban and Rural Planning Act legislation that it's required to be ratified by council. We had no advance notice from anyone about this, we had no advance from anyone about any meetings or plans to stop a work order. Our initial contact from town was to contact them regarding concerns, which we did immediately. We have done all the right things and kept in contact and followed up by emails regarding the date for the meeting. This certainly seems very heavy-handed. Not only is this affecting my family, but also the families of Aboriginal artists we support. Our appeal on this matter is not, is now in place, but meantime, I want to speak today and ask for your help. Wally, your wife gave me an award when I was in grade four, best all-around student. Bert, I don't know you, but my mom likes you. She says you're a good writer. Sean, I admire you for the work you've done at the funeral home. Lori, the fundraising that you and your daughter do, I've contributed to it many times. Jackie, you're a fighter for this community. Michelle, I leave you last, because we have family in common. My granddaughter is a burden, and this is who I'm thinking about, my family. I don't know what else to say. I'm very, very sad to say. The least in this leaf, which was led me to believe that one thing, I feel like the rug was pulled underneath from me, and I really hope that nobody else has experienced what my family has gone through. I'm asking for your help, and I want to work with the council. We're a very small operation with nobody but me and my husband. Thank you.
Michelle, I'd like to ask you a question. When you were delivered your stop work order, were you told that you could continue with your Lavender Upholstery shop?
We were Lavender Upholstery, I don't re-
It was never clear. We asked many as well, and nobody had the answer.
Because it was clear from the committee that you could continue, you are approved for Lavender Upholstery shop.
Yeah, we emailed Randy Dillon, no answer. We emailed Brian Johnson, no answer on that question. Who else did we ask? There was quite a few, and nobody would answer.
And as for your, were you mentioned about ministers? That's the first I heard of that today, that under the municipal act.
We've done a lot of work, because this is my livelihood, hey?
Well, he said that his signature is not required, and that that legislation can be used.
I don't know if any other council is aware of that, but that's the first I heard of that today. Because I asked that question, is there anything that can be done? And I was told that we had to wait till the regulations, and once we, but Lavender Upholstery will continue.
Apparently, the only thing called on the regulations is the water issues. It's nothing to do with this and these regulations, apparently, because they've been in effect since two thousand eighteen and adopted by council. We've been told that they, in fact, can certainly be used and could have been used in this case. And we were asked to ask this council, what do you need from her so she can reopen and upgrade? So that's the question that we have, and that's what we were told to ask her today because we have to get back to them tomorrow.
Okay, we don't get into a full debate during the delegation, but council, staff, is there any way that the committee, who does the permits and so on, if they could arrange a meeting very shortly? I'm not sure if you got time this evening, but to sit down with Michelle and to see what can be done to try and get things back on track?
Mayor, can I, not to cut you off, but can I say that at least the development committee, there's three of us here that sat on that committee and discussed this, and there's information that they said today that I'm not aware of, and I don't know if Lori and Bert are, but we definitely, and you heard it, that's their livelihood, so we can't put this on hold. I think we should meet with them as soon as we can.
Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you, Jackie.
So can, I'm going to ask, and again, for my work, I'm leaving three o'clock tomorrow morning, and I won't be back until maybe Friday, but is there any way that the committee, I'm asking the committee members, right, getting to a debate here, now, is there any way that you could sit down this evening after the meeting with the?
Absolutely.
I can, yeah.
To see?
Thank you.
Okay.
Now, the other thing that they told us was to get another application in, by the way, if we wanted to advance, because we, because I don't know what the concerns are, like what is it they want her to take over, store in that cell? I mean, I don't know, is it chips and bars? I don't know, right? But they said that we're allowed under those new rules anyway, as a discretionary use. If she, and she was advised to put that application in as well, so that what if it never happens to her again, that she's shut down because she should have something and should not have something else.
We'll have a discussion after.
I, I-
No, I'm just letting you know that.
Yeah, yeah, no problem.
I appreciate it.
I would say that our meeting should be over probably before seven, so shortly after that, the committee will get together with you.
What time?
Michelle?
Seven.
Seven.
Seven, okay.
So we can text you-
Around seven.
Yeah. We can text you prior to, and get you to come back.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay, perfect.
Thank you.
If you could, if you could leave a phone number where they can, where our staff, you got it? Okay.
They got it. Way to go.
Okay.
And I will make sure that you get a copy, that each council gets a copy of this as well?
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, we're waiting for our next delegation. Okay, good evening, Daryl, you and Dave, you're ready to go. Prior to that, I'll ask Michelle to read the rules and regulations regarding a delegation.
Thank you, Your Worship.
In accordance to creating a friendly and approachable environment for delegates to meet with the council, it's recommended that the public have followed good Spain, one, notify the town manager or his descendant of their intention at least thirty minutes before the meeting, providing their name and contact information, make it known of the issues that they wish to convey so that the town manager may present it to the attention of the mayor and council members before the council meeting begins. The mayor and council has the right to limit discreet the number of delegates' presentation before each council meeting. Two, at the time and notification, delegates given ten minutes maximum to discuss their concerns or issues. After the presentation, mayor and council members may ask questions or make comments on the information presented. Three, in consideration for the length of council meeting, delegates may wish to bring forth their issues, concerns, in a written request that includes the subject of the presentation, name and contact information for either the mayor or council member or town manager to respond by a letter. The twelfth council encourages the public to meet the mayor and council members to bring their concerns or issues, while at the same time we ask that you be respectful when presenting your issues or concerns in a friendly tone and environment to converse on any of the town's topic of discussion or concerns. And Mayor, I would like to add that I'll be watching the clock, ten minutes, and when it comes to one minute left, I'm going to go single one minute, just to let you know that the minute's almost up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Daryl, carry on.
All right, so thank you for taking the time to listen to me today. I have my husband here with me as well. I will say that we are both indigenous. My husband is a Nunati of the Beneficiary, and myself, I'm a Nunahtu of the Beneficiary. Recently, I brought some concerns to a member of the council and to the mayor, and it seemed as if nobody really knew what to do. So I'm standing- So I'm standing here today wondering, what is the process when somebody is operating without fire inspections? Without health and safety, without workers' comp, without food licenses? Um, running a full-fledged retail store under a, uh, a home-based business with very minimal taxes compared to myself and, you know, and my husband, um, like what, what goes on there? Cause it, it seemed like it took a very long time before we could get any answers. And I just want to make this clear, like this is not, I'd like to see everybody thrive and do whatever. It's not about the competition. It's about if I, if there's going to be competition, it should, everybody should be on the same playing field. If I gotta have thousands of dollars in licenses a year, then so should everybody else if they're operating the exact same way as I am. So, um, that is where we're standing because it was very confusing, um, to, to know like where, and I will, I will say, now that I have the opportunity, I tried to call, uh, the municipal enforcement line, um, because I tried to keep this very private at first because this is a small community and I don't want anybody to think that I'm against them because I'm not. I just want everybody to be playing fair. But in order to leave a message for the community constable or the municipal enforcement officer, you gotta leave your name. You don't have to leave your name when you call the RCMP if you want to make a, you know, a, not even a complaint, uh, just any circumstance, like if I called the RCMP about something that I was concerned about and I chose not to leave my name, they would leave it at that. Uh, but when I called the municipal enforcement line, she would not take any info, uh, any information from me until I left my name and my phone number. And at that point, this was a few months ago, I wasn't comfortable doing that.
Darrell, I've got a question for you. Uh, you said you've been, uh, waiting a long time to get an answer. I don't know how long or who you spoke to or whatever, it doesn't matter, but it was only, uh, it was discussed at the last development planning committee meeting, uh, which was a couple of weeks ago.
Okay.
So that's the first I heard of your concern.
Okay.
So.
So I, yeah, so I guess I won't get into that, like, cause I asked for confidentiality.
Yeah.
Uh, so it might have been brought forward in a different manner because I did ask and, and that was on me. I did ask for confidentiality because I, I just didn't want to go about it the wrong way, but it seems there's no way. There's, like, what is it? And, you know, if the town is knowingly allowing somebody to, to operate without fire inspection, without, uh, service NL inspections, uh, food licenses with service NL, if somebody happened to get hurt or sick, who's, who's liable? I would imagine there would be some type of liability for the town knowingly allowing that to go on and, and not putting a stop to it. That's my concerns. Um, I don't know if you have any concerns that you want to speak before our time?
Just the permits and everything else, I mean, if one business can do it one way and one business can do it the other way, why is that allowed? I mean, if I gotta chuck out three, four, or five thousand a year in permits and insurances, how can the other person don't need to do the same thing? Whether they're doing a thousand dollars a day in business or a million, they have to pay the permits the same as everybody else, in my eyes. If not, why do I need to pay? That's, that was my concern.
And, you know, like, it's, it's not rocket science. We got a little snack shack. And we knew that before we put that in operation, we were to come to the town to get a permit, a vendor permit to operate it. And when we came to the town, then we had to go get our service NL inspections and things like that before the town would permit us to operate, which is fa, that's fine, that's the rules.
I spent thirty thousand dollars on getting a snack shack last June and I wasn't allowed to go anywhere until the end of September because
Well, COVID.
First we talked about COVID, then it was permits, I went and got the permits, I went to NL, the government for permits, and then the town permits, the permits and everything. And I spent, just to get my snack shack on, it was more than somebody's paying with nothing. Brother business is a home-based business out of a, out of a building that's not even in their home and it's not a home-based business. That is my concern.
In my opinion, I mean, we're not, we're not supposed to debate here, but I, I've said this over and over and over, a home-based business needs overhaul.
Yeah, because it's unfortunate both for commercial businesses and people in the home-based business situation because I was just listening to the meeting and I, and I understand what happened Friday. So like, how can the council not get to that point? Obviously you've got two people very upset and there, there got to be something.
What it boils down to is everybody got to be treated the same.
Yes, that's all I'm asking for is fairness. Yeah, because I don't, it's not fair to, to watch somebody directly compete against me with probably ten percent of, um, the fees and licenses when you gotta have a license to sell certain things.
And then there's guidelines and enforcement at all places apart, right?
Yes.
So, that is definitely a deeper discussion for the development and planning committee, and I've said that a few months ago.
Yeah, yeah, and I think that, and like I said before, I think you should really look at, and I know you probably get a ton of calls that are bogus calls to the municipal enforcement line, you know, like calls of pettiness, but you should really take into consideration, um, that people would sometimes like to not disclose their information. Uh, we are quite a small town and we, we do need to act like that sometimes.
I, I, I just want to clarify one thing, mayor, because we had this discussion in, uh, in a couple of the committees. The municipal enforcement line is just for that, enforcement and, you know.
Yeah, so I-
So the other line, and I don't, it's out there, because I know our PR has put it out there a couple of times. Any complaints from the residents, the community with regards to anything with town operations is three, three, two, one.
Yeah, so I called and then they told me to call the municipal enforcement line. And then I got in touch with municipal enforcement and I ended up reaching out to a counselor because I just wasn't comfortable.
Yeah, so, you know, I, I, I don't know, I mean, I mean, I know that Public Relations has put it out there that there's this line and-
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, and I just-
An apartment rule, that would work, but it's not an apartment rule.
Yeah.
They could say we called and pushing on some-
Perhaps we could do some more promotion on it, PR.
Yeah, yeah, and maybe like, I don't know, might have been somebody new or filling in that day, but whoever it was on the phone, she did direct me to call the municipal enforcement line.
Uh, Darrell, just to add to that, uh, during our last committee meeting, uh, there was some discussion around that. There was some confusion or some misunderstanding of how things were, records were kept. Uh, because the complaints that were called in for town issues.
Yeah.
Non-enforcement issues, uh, uh, they're logged in a book. And for a few months, they weren't inputted and still part of our package.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and I just kind of slipped because we were getting another report from this Valley Communications that takes care of the enforcement issues. So now we're, uh, we're gonna, we, we-
Yeah, I think it's, it's worth to look at it. I mean, I'm sure that there's reasons behind that. I mean, I, I'm, I can understand, but there got to be something.
Now, on a go-forward basis, those things will, should be logged.
Yeah.
Oh, I agree with you, Darrell. We need to approve that, right? And we, we're aware of it.
Yeah, oh, that's good.
Yeah.
And Darrell, uh, council will look into it and, and by the way, just for the record, I think was, I'm not sure it was Thursday or Friday lunch hour when you called me.
Yeah.
That was the first that, you know, came, that stuff came my way.
Yes, that's right, and I appreciate the work that everybody did for me because honestly, uh, I didn't really know, like, okay, so why can this one do it and then like, I'm over here spending a fortune trying to keep the, you know, like, why? How does this work? So maybe I should put an apartment on my store and have a home base, like, what, what was it? What is it? So I guess it's a learning curve for everybody. And, and I just want to reiterate that, you know, it's, this is not personal against anybody, um, anything like that. It, it's just let's be fair, let's play fair, and then it's fair.
Yeah, we know that.
Council will look into it.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
You too.
Okay, we'll move on and, uh, I'll call for the adoption of the previous minutes, the eighty-fifth minute, April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one.
So moved.
Moved by, uh, councillor Cran, seconded by-
I'll second.
Councillor Dyson Edmonds, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried unanimously. Call for the adoption of the previous minutes, the eighty-sixth minute, May the tenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
So moved.
Moved by councillor Cran, seconded by Deputy Mayor Palmeroy, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried unanimously. Uh, adoption of the previous minutes, the eighty-seventh minute, May the seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one.
So moved.
Moved by, uh, councillor Compton-Hobbs, seconded by councillor Batey, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried unanimously. Okay, we'll pass, go on through the correspondence and we'll move on to the committee, uh, meeting recommendations. And the first one is, uh, municipal services councillor Cran.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, municipal services committee met on May the eleventh, four forty-five PM. Present, for myself, councillor Michelle Batey, deputy mayor Bert Comeroy, engineer Randy Dilling, fire chief Brad Butler, superintendent of water and sewer Keith Poise, superintendent of public works, DJ Elliott, executive assistant Kathy Eddy, regrets, regrets from Nadine McCauley. Meeting was called at order at four forty-six PM. Review of the previous minutes and action items, no errors or omissions. Management reports, fire department. Sorry, guys, I just lost my- Here with me.
Thank you, Nadine.
Manager's, uh, report was attached and reviewed to date sixty-eight emergency calls, all fire apparatuses are fully serviceable. All car nine being repaired and rebranded by outside community source free of charge. Working on job description for FPO position. Twenty thousand dollar donation from Valet went towards hydraulic extraction tools. Ten thousand from IGA approved for auger gear replacement. Fire further one training ongoing, regular training has resumed. Must-read file service agreement has been signed and waiting to be returned. A tour of must-read files was last Saturday, five officers in mutual aid agreement with five wing, no update. Public works manager's report was attached and reviewed. Crews are performing regular seasonal duties, tipping fees is at seventy-four thousand. Heavy equipment fleet maintenance ongoing, further discussion and evaluation needed. Spring cleanup scheduled being completed and PSA to go out. I believe that's scheduled to start on May thirty-first. Randy, is that right or?
Uh, what was that again, councillor?
For the, for the cleanup, cleanup schedule.
Uh, May thirty-first, I think, I think that's right, yes.
Thank you. Uh, seasonal HEO's finished up and seasonal labor's coming back. Groundwater issues on Mitchell and Pottle requires attention. We had a discussion and, uh, call on the engineer if he would like to, uh, give us an update on that, on that file. One on the, uh, the groundwater issues on Mitchell and Pottle.
Oh, oh, yes, thank you, councillor. Busy doing some other, uh, looking at some other files there. Yes, uh, we have, uh, we have funds allocated for that. It was, uh, they were approved, they were discussed with municipal affairs and they, they are included in one of our recommendations as to, uh, in one of our schedules for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand seventeen multi-year capital works program. Uh, the funds approved were roughly around two hundred and, uh, two hundred and eighty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. This would be to complete the canal upgrades and as well as to conduct a, a stormwater study in the area. And I've discussed that with the consultant today and once we get this, uh, these schedule As approved, uh, after this, during this council meeting, uh, council's recommendation can then be forwarded into municipal affairs uh, of its acceptance of the schedule As and we can get this, uh, we can get this project started very shortly. Uh, I've communicated that to the consultant that we are expecting these, uh, these, um, projects to get started and they're gearing up for the final approval.
Thank you. Also might as well mention too that the issues on Mitchell and Pottle, I think now has gone, um, uh, over to Rendell as well. I understand there's been some, some, some basement flooding, something like that way?
Yes, it seems like the groundwater issue has migrated down across Kellin, down towards the, the Rendell subdivision area. And I know there was one house in particular that was experiencing groundwater infiltration. Uh, this stormwater study will address any potential, uh, future issues in, in this particular area. And hopefully they'll come up with a recommendation as to what we can do to mitigate any, any future issues that, uh, we encountered this year.
Just a question, town man, or, uh, county engineer, the, uh, we've also had some groundwater flooding in other parts of town too, haven't we? In, in the valley part, area of town as well?
Uh, that's correct, deputy mayor. Down around Strathcona, uh, there was a house in the area, I think it was the directory of the, uh, of the Antgen Church demands. That also had a, had, uh, groundwater infiltrator basement. So they, they encountered a lot of issues down there. They had some mold issues and, you know, fairly extensive infiltration of groundwater in that, in that particularly low area, so. So it seems to be very pervasive throughout the community, you know, that anyone that are in low-lying areas are encountering, you know, these, these types of groundwater infiltration issues.
Carry on with your report, yeah, then we'll, like, carry on with your report and once finished then, uh,
I just have one question.
Anyone can ask questions once your report is finished, yeah?
Uh, okay, I'm the Royal Silver Manager's report was attached and reviewed, regular maintenance and checks ongoing. Maintenance on well two conducted and PVC pipe replaced with stainless steel. EWTTP has general maintenance ongoing and security cameras installed. San Hill is operating as per normal, maintenance to be completed. Reserve bar scheduled for maintenance as town permits, steam unit is out of order and car ten is currently out of commission. Considering replacing car ten with a towable trailer. All lift stations have been inspected, plans through, plans in place for sewer cleaning. Order control unit is working well. New control system installed on Johnny Hill booster pump. Service calls ongoing, fire hydrant replacement will begin this summer. Excuse me. Under engineering manager's report was attached and reviewed, the YMCA substantial completion issued April thirtieth and waiting on deficiency list. Kellin Drive extension contractor started construction on May fifth. Local road upgrades contractor started construction on May fifth. Trail upgrades will be re-tendered. Pop and approval from DTI, RV park design. Final design tender documents received from consultant with total cost estimated at two million, one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars. High roof service van has arrived, gazebo installation, tendered documents being prepared for installation. The, uh, next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, June eighth at four forty-five PM. There being no further business, the meeting adjourned at five fifty PM. I ask that my, uh, report be accepted as presented. And mayor, I do have a recommendation to bring as well.
It's been moved by councillor Cran, seconded by, uh, uh, deputy mayor Comeroy, uh, all in favor of the, uh?
Aye.
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 I'm sorry, questions on the, uh, report? Uh, any questions on the report?
Well, I just have one question for the town engineer, um, with the flooding that goes around the community, is that norm- With the flooding that goes around the community, is that normal for this time of the year to be higher than normal? Or is that just unusual due to climate change? Or what would you think that would be causing it?
Uh, thank you, Counselor. Seems to be unusual for this particular area around this, well, not unusual for the time of year, but it's unusual for the, the amount of, uh, of, uh,
Thank you.
of rise that we have in the groundwater level. I think probably is attributed to the, we had a lot of snow melt. We had a rainstorm back on Boxing, on Christmas Day and Boxing Day where we lost about a meter of snow. And I think all that, all that water got held up in the, in the low long areas and the bogs and the marshes and so on. And then when we had our regular spring thaw, I think that exacerbated the, you know, this, uh, this, uh, water, groundwater level rise.
Thank you.
Hopefully in the future it won't be as severe as this, but anyway, we're, we're, uh, in the process of, of trying to mitigate any, any, any future issues.
Randy, we, uh, we are in the process of, of, uh, uh, allotting the funds to, uh, you can wait the canal through the slopes and, uh, we're bringing in, uh, a specialist to, uh, to view the whole thing there to try and, uh, you know, to come up with a permanent solution. And I know for the residents that, you know, the waiting party is, uh, you know, uh, is unbearable. Uh, I was in the home of a couple again today this morning. And certainly that it's been five weeks and, uh, you know, the stress on them, you know, is, uh, certainly unbearable. And, uh, you know, it's not easy, but I mean, uh, uh, we've, we've taken money from some of our projects. Uh, we've realotted them. We had to go through, uh, different procedures. But, uh, you know, I, for, for all of council, I think what's needed here now because like if we look at the way that the, the weather is that, like we need not, not as much a quick fix. We need a real fix that, uh, that, uh, next year and the year after that, that we never ever end up with people's houses, uh, you know, in certain parts of town, uh, you know, being flooded again. So, uh, I know it's not easy for the people, but we are, we are working on something and, and we're trying to find a permanent solution to, uh, to fix, uh, the groundwater issue that occurred in our town this year.
Uh, that's correct, Your Worship. I know in our groundwater study we can, will consist of three phases. The first phase will be a desktop review of existing groundwater and lotar data. And second phase will be a field investigation installation of monitoring equipment. And the, uh, third phase, uh, would entail groundwater modeling. So we are actively looking at, at, uh, at this investigation and hopefully we do something, uh, in the way of a recommendation to, uh, to, uh, solve any, any future issues.
Uh, Mr. Dillon, I just want to ask, um, I too went to some of these homes and there's complete devastation out there. And, uh, I mean, you know, all of us, if we, I certainly brought it to the council, I know others did too, but you know, our, our hands are tied because it should have been probably dealt with years ago, a better water drainage system, when the development was put in place. But, uh, you know, I asked two, you know, questions like can we assist by helping pump out the water? But if you see it, the pump truck or whatever, you know, to suck out the water is just going to keep filling back up. So, so that, you know, we can't even assist that way. And I don't know if people understand it or because it's kind of like, you know, what's the town doing? What's the town doing? What, what's the council doing? We certainly had a lengthy discussion on it, so, you know, um, for the, for the people that are listening in, I mean, it's not something that we put to the waste or to throw under the rug. We had discussions on it and my understanding, what I'm told is right now there's, there's nothing we can do until the water dries up underground. And I don't know if you've got anything further to add to that?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Counselor. Well, I guess number one, the town's not negligent and it's not something that we actively, uh, caused in the way of, you know, with these groundwater levels rising. And the thing is, we, we really can't set a precedent by reacting to every time that an individual has a, has something, has something of this nature. And, and there's not a whole lot we can do anyway, you know. So basically it's something that the homeowner will, will have to look after, uh, with their own resources. And the town doesn't really have the staff or the, the, uh, the resources to look after each one of these individual residences, uh, issues. And, and it wouldn't be fair to the rest of the, I guess, the town to incur these costs and collateral costs and so on that, uh, you know, that the town incur this cost for, for every issue. And it would, it would be a precedent for down the road that if we do incur these types of issues again, that the town is getting involved with something that for which they have, they have no liability.
But Randy, uh, that being said and done, uh, we've had a lot of discussions around, uh, with council on this year. Uh, you know, then people may, may not realize. And on behalf of council, I've been in your office almost every day asking questions, uh, you know, how is this moving along? And the question was, you know, uh, is hindsight from, from some other council? Maybe it was, maybe it wasn't, uh, you know, like, but, you know, we're taking the approach to find the right answers to fix it. And, uh, I think, you know, that's the message that we need to get out there as often as possible. And as you move forward with, uh, with the different steps, it would be nice if we could put it out to let the people know that we are working. And if there's something that government comes back approves, uh, for the council, that we can move on to the next part of, no matter what it is. Like we need to get that part out there.
I don't know, did I miss when you said it might start the work or did you say?
Well, we, uh, for the, for the canal, we're hoping to get the tender documents ready in two weeks. Once we get the final approval sent into Municipal Affairs tomorrow, uh, we should have the tender documents. I was talking to the consultant and they expect to have the tender documents ready in two weeks. Uh, the study will be starting immediately soon as we get the final approval from Municipal Affairs, which will hopefully be within the next day or two. But as, as the mayor said, you know, while we aren't reacting individually to these residences, we are, you know, committing considerable funds to address the whole infrastructure, a permanent solution to, to this groundwater issue. So we are, you know, we are, uh, reacting, you know, in a, and I guess in a responsible manner to make sure that the whole area actually is, uh, is, uh, is addressed and by, uh, by having, having this work completed.
And Randy, uh, I'm, yeah, I'm grateful you mentioned that from here, but, but Randy, as, as the stuff starts to unfold, can you inform council so we in turn can go back? And I think if we can go back and start telling the people, look, this is what we're doing now and this is the next step, you know? While it may not be a, a speedy solution, at least we can walk them step by step to know that, you know, we're trying to do the right thing and to find not a quick fix, but a permanent solution to, uh, to the, the groundwaters in, in, in the area of Mitchell and Pottle and Randall Street as well.
Uh, town, town engineer, just a question in terms of, well, first of all, I think this has certainly been a priority for the town for a number of weeks since it's been brought to our attention. And, and I know I've received a lot of calls from, from affected residents as well and, uh, they've been in touch with the town and, and the mayor is right. I mean, uh, we, we, we got to do that work. We got to find it, make sure it's done right. And, uh, we can't change what happened in the past or what didn't happen, but we got to move forward. We got to try and find a solution here. Uh, so I think it's safe to say that this is probably one of the biggest priorities before the town right now. And, and the question I have is, um, you mentioned about, um, having a tender awarded within a couple of weeks. Is there a way, like, is there a way that that can be done sooner? Or do we have to go to tender or can we get a ministerial approval to, uh, to award a contract in a, in, in an emergency situation?
Uh, we can probably go out through an emergency, uh, an, an emergency situation. We, we still have to prepare the, the tender documents because we do have local contractors. You don't want to go out and award it to one local contractor. So we, we do have a number of local contractors who can perform the work. But it will be a quick turnaround with the tender call and with contract award.
It would take, it would be fairly quick?
It would be fairly quick, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Given the fact that it's all local, uh, it's not difficult work. So they should be able to price it fairly quickly. And I'll discuss this with the consultant, uh, and, uh, we'll get this done and completed as soon as possible.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I know most people want to have a solution right away and we all do. I mean, it's not, uh, can't, must be very disheartening to have to live, live like that. And anyone that's been affected by flooding knows it's very devastating. So, uh, hopefully, uh, we get that contract soon and hopefully we find a short-term solution for now and then get a long-term solution after the study is completed.
Sure, yes.
Okay. Are there any further questions on Municipal Affairs, uh, report?
Just to clarify, I wasn't saying, uh, it was anybody's fault in the past. I don't know what happened in the past, but in the future for any future developments, we certainly should have a, you know, the drainage system up to par that this never happens again. I know you're looking at that area, but any other developments in town, right? I think we had a lengthy discussion on, on what that development area was supposed to be and some of the, some of the guidelines or some of the recommendations weren't exactly followed, I think, when some of the houses were, were being built, so.
Yeah, that's, that's quite possible, Counselor. Uh, the area, I believe, was, uh, zoned residential special and there were certain conditions as to what that meant at the time. So if you couldn't have a two-story house, you couldn't have, uh, mostly, most of the houses would have been similar to those in Adams Luke. So that's how that was zoned as well.
And, and, and while, while that may be true, you know, the, the concern from a lot of the residents is that, you know, you know, were they told? When they went and they bought the parcel of land from the developer, when they went and they, 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 uh, applied for the permit from the town, you know, were they told, uh, were, uh, that, you know, that, uh, the way services is special?
Residential special zone.
Residential special, were they told the meaning of what residential, uh, uh, special meant? Because, uh, when you talk to a lot of them, that they were totally unaware of, of anything like that. So as we move forward, I think, uh, Councilor Compton-Hobbs has probably taken that we need to, uh, you know, we need to, uh, have everything in place that when our children and grandchildren apply for parcel of land, that if, 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 if there's going to be problems, they should be told upfront.
And just a, one, one other question for town. Were we able to come across any development agreement for that area? That, that would have, that would have addressed that concern or raised that concern?
Uh, no, Deputy Mayor, we checked the files and, uh, we couldn't find any development agreements specifically related to that.
There was no development agreement to, to develop that subdivision that we can find.
Not, not that we could find, no.
Okay, again, before we, we, we move on again, Randy, I think you heard Malo Council that, you know, that, you know, like, what we're trying to get done here is a priority and, uh, and I know that you got a, a big workload, so but whatever you can do to, to get it done, like, we'd appreciate it. Are there any further questions for, uh, Councilor Cran? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried unanimously. Okay, uh, we'll move on to the next one is, uh, Councilor Compton.
Your Worship?
I'm, I'm sorry, you do have a recommendation, yes. I'm sorry.
This under Multi-Capital Works Program Schedule A submission to Department of Transportation Infrastructure. Municipal Services Committee recommends that the Schedule A appendage be approved under the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-three Multi-Year Capital Works Program. The total provincial funds approved under this program are two million, forty-four thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars. The Municipal Services Committee recommends that the revised Schedule A appendage be approved under the two thousand seventeen, two thousand twenty Multi-Year Capital Works Program. Municipal Services Committee.
Uh, point of order, sir? It has to be one and then we fold on each and then?
I was told the three of them could be read together, sorry.
Is it?
Three can be read together.
Oh, can they?
Three of them can be read together. Could you, Robert, either?
Yeah, uh, the, the three, the three could be read together, sorry.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Okay, the third part, the Municipal Service Committee recommends that the revised Schedule A appendage be approved under the two thousand fourteen, two thousand seventeen Multi-Year Capital Works Program. I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilor Cran, seconded by Councilor Palmeroy. Are there any questions on the recommendations put forward? There being none, all in favor of the recommendations?
Aye.
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 Carried unanimously. Okay, Councilor Cran, thank you for your report and your recommendation and we'll move on to Councilor Compton-Hobbs, uh, Community Services and Recreation.
Okay, Community Service and Recreation Committee met on May the tenth. Uh, present was myself, Counselor Cran, Counselor, uh, Michelle Baiki, P R Manager Whalen Williams, Program Coordinator Anne Morris, Engineer Randy Dillon, Executive Assistant Kathy Eddy, D F O Nadine McCauley, and Director of Community Development and Research Brenna Drure. Some of the discussions we had during that meeting, uh, was the Wellness Center and I'm going to just get an update on that, uh, after I finish my report. Some other business we talked about was a Community Cleanup Day. Uh, we discussed setting, uh, scheduling a day for a community cleanup, particularly around, uh, businesses and, and, and different departments and offices around town. So that's still, I guess, the program directors working with the P R manager to, uh, set a date and get this out there. We talked about a Physical Activity Day, so we agreed that we would, um, schedule a June, possibly June the fourth for a, uh, under the Community Betterment Initiative for June to, uh, schedule a physical, physical activity day. And we were going to do it similar to Kensington Park when we, uh, put out a call for people to submit their photos for, uh, chance to win, uh, three gift cards. So we're doing similar things to that and, uh, the date we had agreed to was June the fourth. And I guess the program director's working with P R to get this, uh, put in place. So we're going to encourage everybody in the community to get out and, uh, do some physical activities throughout the day and submit their folders, whether it's cleaning their lawns or walking or walking their dog, whatever. It's been a, you know, a, a somber few months with COVID, so hopefully we can encourage as many people as possible to get out. Summer Rec Directors, uh, is advertised and the deadline is this, uh, week. So hopefully we can get those interviews completed and have a summer rec director in place. Also in the next week or two, we'll be advertising for the, uh, ten summer students for the Summer Rec Program, so we can get that up and running. Stay tuned, you'll see some, uh, some information on the town website on that. Program Coordinator gave us an update on the playgrounds, they're all up and open and, um, swings are up. Garbage cans are out and the grounds have all been cleaned, so they're all in full operation. Kensington Park opened as, as of last week. In our budget, we did approve some adult playground equipment. Uh, Brenna is, uh, going to work with our program coordinator Anne to, uh, pick out some of these, uh, pieces of equipment that we're going to place in Kensington Park, so adult playground equipment. So hopefully that'll be done in the next, uh, few weeks. Uh, we talked about, uh, the gazebo. We do have a second gazebo for the, uh, Kensington Park. It has been purchased, we're just waiting on a foundation to be completed. So the tender will be issued for construction and that should be done fairly soon. We talked about the ball leagues, as of now, uh, the ball leagues are planning on proceeding. So, uh, Program Coordinator Anne will work with the leagues to get, uh, you know, everything in place that needs to be to return to play plans and so on, get the fields all dragged and cleared and ready to go. And we had a, the manager's report updated. Now, I want to thank Brenna, who's been doing quite a bit of work with the Community Service and Recreation Department, uh, in the past few months. She submitted some applications for funding, so we're waiting here back on that. And of course, Canada Day celebrations will be going virtual again this year and, uh, we'll have a committee in place and be working with her Public Relations Manager Special Events to, uh, get this, uh, um, put together and organized for Canada Day. Our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, June the seventh, so I ask that you please accept my report as presented.
It's been moved by Councilor Compton-Hobbs, seconded by Councilor Baiki. Uh, are there any, uh, questions, uh, on the report put forward?
Just, uh, I'd like to ask, uh, the town engineer, uh, we were aiming for the end of June for the opening of the Wellness Center. Is that still the, uh, plan or are we?
Uh, that's the target date, target date, Counselor. I know I have some meetings later on this week with the, um, with the Uh, I know I have some meetings later on this week with the, um, with the Y and with, uh, with our owner's advisor, Architecture Forty-Nine. Uh, there are still some deficiencies that need to be completed, namely, one is the lighting in the pool that probably we're not pleased with at this point in time. So, I'll have a further update by the end of the week as to if we're still looking at the end of June.
So, uh, can you answer, is this sub-, uh, the, the completion, substantial completion, has that been done, or?
It was anticipated to be towards the end of April, uh, but given the fact that some of these deficiencies are a little bit delayed in, in, in being completed, we're gonna have to rethink that. So, uh, we're still hoping for the end of June, so I really can't say on, right now, until, until we have our meeting, uh, later on this week.
I know that the, the Y MCA is, uh, doing some interviews this week for some positions there. Um, and, uh, everybody's anticipating the end of June, so.
So, that's still a target date, and I really can't say for certain whether it will be the end of June. That's what we're aiming for, but I'll, I'll be more certain as, uh, you know, as we get closer, and hopefully by the end of the week, we'll have a, we'll have a better timeframe as to how things will unfold.
And I just wondered, at the meeting, we mentioned about the tender will be issued for construction. Did you get any further ahead for that, for the gazebo and the walking trail?
The, uh, foundation will be started within the next, um, I'm supposed to get a schedule early this week. So, I was talking to the contractor there on, on the weekend, and he said he was, uh, you know, he was working on Nattuishish, and he was back in town this week, so he's hoping to get me a, a final schedule for the, for the installation of the foundation. Soon as we get the foundation, the completion time straight away for that, we'll have our tender out for the, for the installation.
And, uh, the last question I got is on the trails. We're supposed to do the gateways or whatever, is there any update on when they're gonna start?
We have a revised set of tender documents, just came in today, and we're gonna have a, have a conference call scheduled with the, with the consultant, uh, tomorrow to finalize the, uh, the tender and get that re-tendered, get that out within the next, uh, within the next few days.
I just wanted to one, mention one thing that I, I meant to mention in my report is, uh, on, uh, June, uh, there's four different dates in June, also part of the, uh, community betterment, uh, challenge is the Bike Labrador, or, uh, doing a challenge and encouraging everybody to come out, four dates in, uh, in, uh, June, to participate in a bike ride or what have you, uh, so that they can, uh, enter in, uh, into a contest that, that the town could possibly win one hundred thousand dollars if we get, you know, uh, enough people out to participate. So, I encourage everybody to, uh, it's on the town website, it's on the Bike Labrador site, and the town shared it, and, uh, to go in and, uh, read the details of the different dates in June that are set and get out and participate. We, you know, we could have a, we could have an opportunity to win a hundred thousand dollars to put back into, uh, the bike, uh, trails. So, yeah, all the information is online, so encourage everybody to come out, participate.
Councillor, what was the date again? What was that date again?
There's four different dates in June set.
Okay, so.
The four Sundays in June, I believe it is, um, to, uh, uh, for anybody to come out, we're encouraging anybody in the community to come out, participate, get involved, and, uh, would give us an opportunity, a challenge.
That's the participation challenge, is called.
Yeah, community betterment participation challenge.
So, yeah, we, we can promote that on our Facebook page and our website?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So, uh, yeah, and if we're, if the commu-, if Town and Happy Valley Goose Bay did win a hundred thousand dollars, we could put that money back into the bike trails for the community.
Randy, uh, I also wanna thank you personally for, uh, all, as the mayor, for, uh, your job that you're doing with the Wellness Center and with the deficiencies. I know that, you know, there's, the dates are fluctuating back and forth, but, uh, uh, the, the Wellness Center don't open until we take possession. And if we take possession of the Wellness Center and there's a bunch of deficiencies that's not completed, once we take possession, that we could be on the hook. So, uh, you know, you, it's been a tremendous job, a big job, and, uh, you know, you, 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 you carried the town well on that. And I know that, you know, we'd like to see it opened, uh, as soon as possible, but I know that you're doing due diligence to our council and our community by making sure that all the deficiencies are, uh, done, uh, before we, uh, before we take possession. Are there any further questions on the report? There being none all in favor of the report?
Aye.
Aye, carried, unanimous. We'll move on to the next one, development and planning, and deputy mayor Palmeroy.
Thank you, your worship. The Development, Planning and Enforcement Committee met on May the thirteenth. President were myself as chair, councillor Compton-Hobbs and co-, uh, councillor Laurie Dyson Edmonds, um, town engineer Randy Dillon, municipal tech Brian Johnson, GIS tech, tech Paul Zow, municipal enforcement officer Larry Baker, director of financial operations and co-town manager Nadine McCauley, manager of, uh, public relations and special events Waylon Williams, and executive assistant Kathy Eddy, who took the minutes. Meeting was called to order at four thirty-nine PM. We reviewed the previous minutes and action items, there were no errors or omissions. Uh, just wanna note with respect to the action items, the committee was advised by town staff uh, that the town is still waiting for more information regarding regulations around noise contours, particularly in the Quarry Road area. Uh, as per the raise, reg-, regulations, no residential development shall be permitted above airport noise exposure forecast contour thirty-five, unless it is within or immediately adjacent to a built-up residential area with full municipal services, accessory to the use or operations of the airport and/or is military in nature, and are falls under the class of commercial residential, such as hotels, motels, et cetera. All development within the noise contours is subject to the Government of Canada Goose Bay Airport zoning regulations under the Aeronautics Act. And until those restrictions are lifted, uh, as a town, we can't approve any applications for, uh, seasonal recre-, recreational cottages within those contour areas. Uh, so basically, what, what's going on right now, uh, staff is still exploring information, and I believe, uh, town engineer, do you have an update since our meeting?
Uh, yes, deputy mayor. Uh, within the last hour, just before I came in here at the council meeting, I did receive a response from the Five Wing, uh, who, they reached out to Nav Canada and so on. They also received a response from, uh, the First Canadian Air Division in Winnipeg. So, I haven't gone through it in detail, there's some kind of a process there that we can, uh, that I'll further review, uh, so, uh, hopefully within the next day, so I'll be through this, and there's some other forms that, uh, some of the, uh, the applicants can fill out. And, uh, once I get through this, I'll, I'll prize council as well as the applicants that are right now in the, that they have applications for development in the area.
That's good, 'cause it brings some clarity to the whole issue. I mean, the reg-, the regulations are what they are, I mean, we have to abide by the regulations. But in reality, you have, I don't know how many seasonal recreational slash residences that are in the Quarry Road area. Um, and, and they're not moving, they're not going away. And, and there's others that have applied and, uh, you know, wanna be treated the same as others that are up there, and that's, you know, we should be all about fairness. So, uh, hopefully, but for the next committee meeting, you can come back with an overview and, and, and we can look at what options are, if there are any?
Uh, yes, so, yes, so will, deputy mayor.
Okay, thanks.
I think you're still in the middle of your report, should we wait till after, should we ask questions? I wanna ask a couple of questions on that too, but I'll wait till you finish your question.
So, uh, all right, thanks, uh, town engineer. So, uh, the committee also reviewed and discussed a number of crown land discretionary use and various applications, and I'll put forward a number of recommendations for council's consideration shortly. We also discussed JP Forestry's plans to ship wood that was cut for the Muskrat Falls project to markets in China and the UK. Uh, as there were some concerns over the information provided to committee, which is contained in our committee packages, uh, staff was instructed to arrange a meeting with, uh, with the company to discuss its plans, and, uh, that meeting took place last Thursday, uh, with all the council. Uh, I won't get into details, maybe the mayor might wanna add something later. However, I will just say the council raised a number of concerns, particularly around safety, and, uh, over large wood trucks coming through town at all hours of the day, uh, and driving right through our community, uh, uh, as they go towards the dock. Uh, council, uh, suggested that the company explore the possibility of using South Branch Road to transport wood, uh, from the Trans Lavalley Highway to the dock. Um, just a note that the company plans to ship, uh, start shipping towards the end of June, and both sides, both the town and the company, agree to keep lines of communications open, and, uh, that a meeting be planned, uh, uh, with the company again for our next development and planning, uh, committee meeting. Um, there was also some discussion around the town's new urban chicken regulations, where you see the number of concerns from residents who are opposed to the regulations, from the number of chickens permitted on a property to whether or not they should be allowed to keep roosters. Meeting was arranged with concerned res-, concerned residents and the committee last Wednesday. Residents raised, uh, some valid concerns during the meeting, your worship, and the committee agreed to take a further look, uh, at the regulations to see if some common ground can be made. Uh, I think it was an eye-opener for all the committee, realizing that there's probably, uh, sixty or more people keeping chickens in their backyards in town, uh, which, to our knowledge, I don't think any of them have been actually permitted. So, we need to, we need to deal with the situation, again, uh, you know, they're not going away anytime soon, and, uh, you know, there's a lot of positives to it, so our next meeting will be, uh, June the tenth. Uh, we're gonna have a discussion with, uh, with them as well at that, at that next committee meeting. With respect to enforcement, it was brought to committee's attention that general complaints reports were missing from previous council packages. Apparently, there was some misunderstanding or, or, um, it was unclear actually how, as to complaints that are logged by the town office and those logged by Valley Communications. Uh, Valley Communications Complaints Tracks all that involve enforcement issues. Uh, the town office would, uh, gather and, and, uh, put together and log complaints from, uh, residents regarding, uh, town operations, whether that be sand on lawns, uh, snow clearing, uh, broken fences and so on. Um, so, uh, town, uh, co-town manager Nadine McCauley advised that, uh, frontline staff will compile the complaints for further committee meetings, and that staff, uh, ensure that the procedures outlined in the complaints policy, uh, A zero 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 eight, will be followed on a go-forward basis. Municipal enforcement officer presented his report to the committee and highlighted areas that he'd been focusing on during the past month. He advised that he would be facilitating a webinar in June and therefore, uh, will be away from his regular duties during that time. Uh, there was discussions about derelict properties and properties that were destroyed by fire but have yet to be cleaned up. Staff will follow up and provide an update at the next meeting. Financial control summary, monthly payments report, animal control report, the mayor's report from the R C and P were also reviewed, uh, briefly by, uh, by committee. Copies are available in the, uh, in your council packages for your review. Uh, there being no further business, the meeting adjourned at six fifty PM. With that, I move that the, uh, report be accepted as read.
I'll second that.
Moved by, uh, deputy mayor Palmeroy, seconded by councillor, uh, Dyson Edmonds. Are there any questions on the report?
One question, uh, regarding the chicken regulations, were we supposed to rescind them today? Or are we gonna wait until we meet with them?
Well, I guess, uh, well, we can't, we have to give notice of motion to rescind anything prior, it has to be on the agenda prior to the meeting.
Yeah, we were gonna wait, 'cause they're getting back to us with their negotiations yet.
My understanding, councillor, was we, uh, we looked, that that could be an option down the road, but, uh, at this point, uh, we wanna have a further dialogue with them to come up with something that we can find some common ground here that, that.
So, when we left the meeting, we had told them that we would, uh, bring this to the committee, uh, to the public meeting today and have them rescind it, so, I don't know, I guess there was further discussion that we would wait until June the tenth?
Yeah, I think there might have been a discussion of whether or not we could amend the regulations.
We said we would rescind so that the, 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 the new chicken regulations would not be in effect, 'cause some of the conditions in there would change a lot for some of the chicken owners.
Yeah, but I think.
But either way, I guess we're gonna wait till June the tenth, until.
Yeah, I think that was what the discussion was, was that after we get, because they're putting something on paper to us, basically educating us on, on what is required, and when we go through that and we revamp, or for lack of a better word, then that would be part of the process, would be rescinding the prior motion and.
I heard all that, but I also heard that we would bring this to a public meeting Tuesday, but either way, we'll wait now, I guess, until we get their new information for our next development planning.
That wasn't my understanding, like, I, I got same understanding that councillor Dyson Edmonds had, that we would have further conversation with them with a goal of looking at doing an amendment if, if we can. That's, that's, that's the way I took it from him.
Yeah, well.
We're gonna have another meeting with them on the tenth, so.
Yeah, anyway, I don't know how the chicken owners, uh, heard it, but that's what I heard, but either way, doesn't matter, we're gonna meet again by, to next development planning meeting. Um, the other question I was gonna ask you, uh, Randy, was around the, can we make the, um, the, 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 the contour noise level and the meetings at Five Wing? You said you just got an email from Five Wing, and they had reached out to Nav Canada. This has been on here for months and months and months, we got applicants who applied over a year ago. Can, can we make that a priority? 'Cause I know one applicant is being held up on ordering the, the prefab, right?
More than one.
Well, no, the one that I'm referring to is ordering a prefab, but I don't know what, what the others are ordering. But I actually had another applicant reach out to me this past week, and I forwarded it on to you. Uh, that one's agriculture, so they're all being held up based on the information we're waiting here from Five Wing and Nav Canada.
No, certainly councillor's, uh, certainly a priority with me, I've also been in contact with these individuals, and I, I, I appreciate the position they're in, trying to get their, their structures and developments off the ground, so, within the next, certainly within the next day, I'll be, I'll be, uh, I'll be having a, a close look at this.
Yeah, okay, I just, I, I think we should make that a priority, and, uh, like, after every me-, meeting, I'll get the call saying, any news, any updates, what's going on, so, yeah, if we can move that along, it'll be, you know, it'll be excellent for everybody.
Yeah, well, I think right now, this email, I think we have something more substantive now that we can actually have a close look at and, and, and dig into.
Hopefully, there's a way that we can work towards allowing them to do what we know they should be allowed to do.
Yeah, I mean, we need clarity, I mean, this is not go-, this has been going on for years. I mean, this has been going on since development regulations were put into effect in twenty-two thousand eight. So, this is nothing new, and, uh, how people got approvals to build is beyond me and, I guess, beyond council's understanding, but they're up there, they're, they're, they're in a, in a rural area, which, where a seasonal recreational cottage is permitted, and, uh, if they, uh, if they can't build within this area, then, then there's an issue, so we, we gotta figure it out, that's all.
Yeah, I think, um, I think we need to, we need to push that too. I mean, we've been talking about it and waiting for them to get back to us, but like you said, ironically, they called today, so, hopefully, we'll, we'll get that moving quicker. Um, with regards to the, the meeting about the chicken regulations, I think it's really important that the public knows that, that we want to promote, this is something that we fully support and want to promote. We're not trying to stop anybody from having chickens, you know, with, with food security and, and trying to have a sustainable, um, supply, you know, we, we need to do what we can to encourage this, and, you know, the more, the more they can tell us about it, the more the, the, that the public can learn themselves, and hopefully, it'll, it'll, something that's gonna catch on, so I, and I think the group that we met with, um, the other night, I think they understand, stood that loud and clear, that we definitely want to, to work in, in conjunction with them to, to make sure that, that this continues.
And it, it was quite an interesting discussion, and, uh, I mean, who would think that, that a coop should be facing a certain way, or, when, when the sun is coming up, and they need to be facing the sun? I mean, I, those are things that we all need an education on, I think.
Yeah.
So, we're gonna have further discussions with them, and they're gonna come forward with a.
I'm, I'm sure they're tuned in here tonight, so, uh, I think it's important too, that, like, as a councillor, for me, I, I would say that I jumped the gun on a regulation, because I didn't know a lot of information until we met with those chicken regulations. So, uh, I certainly didn't know there were sixty chicken owners in the community, and, you know, there's a lot, there's a lot of upset people over the chicken regulations, you know, I had one woman practically crying the weekend, "I'm not getting rid of my chickens", she might've had ten, but we're saying she can have four, so like, I'm glad we had that meeting, I'm glad we went there, 'cause I learned a lot from the chicken owners and, uh, and, you know, stuff I certainly didn't know prior to, uh, passing the chicken, the new chicken regulations, and I think we're all probably can, we're all, we can all probably say that, that, you know, we were educated.
Yeah, there were, there were some, some modifications to the original, uh, regulations that permitted up to, I believe, it was forty. And then, uh, the new regulations were developed and put in line by our consultant, uh, with, uh, you know, advice from, from, from the town based on the consultation that took place three years ago, two, three years ago.
Yeah.
And, uh, so, so now the regulations changed those numbers to be in line with the town's development regulations, and I think committees of the view that, you know, just because it's done like that elsewhere, and if we have any flexibility. like that elsewhere, and if we have any flexibility to work closely, we live in a rural area primarily, and most people, like in the lower part of the valley particularly, have larger building lots that can certainly, you know, accommodate more than four chickens, so, so that's open for discussion, and.
I just, I, I have one more thing to that, I mean, because I know some of them are listening tonight, that we support, like Counselor Dyson said, we do support the chicken owners, and, you know, some of them have been really stressed out, and their anxiety levels have been high, they told me that yourselves, so I, I mean, I think it's fair for us to say, to put them at ease, that we support them, and we will work with them to make it work for them and the town.
Yeah, we have to find, we'll find a way that satisfies everybody, I mean, there's other residents in the community too, they're concerned, they need to be taken into consideration, so.
The only other thing I'd, I'd like to point out with regards to your report, Mr. Palmer, was we talked, you had mentioned that we had met with J P Forestry. Some of those discussions, I guess, will be ongoing to a certain degree. I, I voiced my concerns with J P Forestry's operations and, and how they, you know, the lack of transparency that I seen, and we were told by the representative when we met with them last week, that those issues of, of the files that were on the government websites were going to be removed, and they're still not. As of fourth of today, those are still active files, so, you know, I, I remain very cautious over the J P Forestry issue, because as long as it's on the federal sites as being in, still ongoing, then in my mind, it's still ongoing, so I have a, I do have a huge concern over what's happening with Wilberly Bay and what, you know, the lack of transparency that we've, we've been given.
It is a bit concerning, because we were told that as of January, that, that application was no longer with Transport Canada, so it'd only take one phone call to come up, call them up and say that our application should have been removed since January. My biggest concern with J P is the traffic coming through our community, and I think we need to really work on a solution to that for sure.
Yeah, I think that's going to be a huge concern, if we're talking, no trucks, no.
I wouldn't mind, you all know, but we sat down here, and what you're talking about now, we brought it forward. And, and, and I asked our public relations officer to go out there and to schedule a meeting with government officials, the, the, the Ino Nation, and, and provincial government representative, and he's working toward that. So, you know, we are, we are going to come back, and by the way, I did receive a call from Mr. Joyce today, saying that they talked to the, the, the federal government, and so he told them to call the town and, and tell the, and the guy said, no, he didn't want to talk to elected officials, so I passed on the name of our public relations officer. Did they, did, did they contact you?
Yes, I got it up.
So, okay, so maybe, you know, seeing we're having the conversation, maybe you want to just enlighten us what, what was said in the, in the telephone conversation.
Well, your worship, I wasn't prepared to, to bring this forward this evening, because, but basically, the gentleman that I spoke to confirmed that in his position as, as a bureaucrat, he's not authorized to speak to elected officials, but I did ask him, I said, well, you know, there's some information that the town has received that an application is still valid for Wilberly Bay. He said he couldn't speak to that, but he's, he did explain the very lengthy process that's involved, and what he is committed to do is to provide correspondence. He told me either today or tomorrow, he should have something to me, and I can certainly disseminate that to, to counsel.
And that can be part and parcel of the meeting when we, when we get.
Sure.
Our next meeting. I, I just want to mention apart, Randy, about Nav Canada, and the contours that they're talking about, and I mentioned this before, like, I find it hard to understand whether people should be up there building, or they shouldn't be up there building, it, it, right now, you know, it's not part of the equation. But when they bring in their jets, depending on what runway they come in, they can fly right over the part of the valley here, right across M O T and land on one airstrip, or they're coming from the other way, and they play right over Spruce Park and, and land on a runway, so for them to say that there's a noise barrier up back of Pine Tree, like, I, I mean, I'm at a loss as to, to what they're thinking is, you know, so.
Maybe I can add a little bit to that, like, like the, right now, the regulation states that no residential development shall be permitted within an immediate adjacent or built-up residential area. Now, you can have, within a community, you can have noise contours within your community that, that, that would, but you have a built-up residential area, and, and if the town approves a building lot in a noise contour above thirty-five within the town limits, within, within the town, then the town can assure, make, recommend, or, or make it a condition of the builder that, that the town will not be liable, or the Government of Canada, or Nav Can, or will not be liable for any inconvenience or any issues associated with noise disturbance in that neighborhood. So that's in the regulation as well, but in an area where there is not, like, a quarry road, does not, does not have full municipal services, so the regulation up there would apply a little bit differently than it would be with, say, Spruce Park or any other part of town.
Anyway, hopefully, we can have a solution. Are there any further questions on the report? There being none, all in favor of the report?
Aye.
Counselor Compton-Hobbs?
What's that off?
Oh, sorry, okay. Carrie, unanimous, and you have some recommendations to bring forward?
Yes, your worship. We received an application numbered one five seven seven eight six from Nicholas Parrott, who hopes to acquire a parcel of crown land on the Groves Point Forest Access Road for the purpose of building a seasonal recreational cottage. I move that council support and approve the committee's recommendation that there be no objection to the application, provided the use is compliant with all of the town's development regulations.
I'll second that.
Be moved by Deputy Mayor Palmer, seconded by Counselor Compton-Hobbs. Are there any questions on the application brought forward? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Carrie, unanimous.
We, we reviewed and discussed a request from Healthy Waters Labrador for the town to acquire crown land near the Burchodden Creek, wetland habitat stewardship area, for the purpose of erecting a replica of an historical trapper's tilt and for other outdoor recreational uses. The land is located in an envi, in an environmentally protected zone, and recreation open space use is at the discretion of council. However, all development in an E P zone are subject to the approval of the Provincial Minister of Environment and Climate Change. In any event, this is a crown land application. I move that council approve and support the request from Healthy Waters Labrador that the town apply for this parcel of crown land for recreation open space use.
I second that.
Just be moved by Counselor Palmer, seconded by Counselor Becky Arhane, first. Are there any questions on the recommendation brought forward? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Carrie, unanimous.
We received an application numbered one five seven seven eight five from Edward and Janice Brarty, couple hopes to acquire a parcel of crown land on the Groves Point Forest Access Road for the purpose of building a seasonal recreational cottage. I move that council support and approve the committee's recommendation that there be no objection to the application, provided the use is, is compliant with all of the town's development regulations.
It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Palmer, do I have a secondary?
I'll second that.
Seconded by four, five, by Counselor Dyson Edmonds, second the motion. Okay, are there any questions? There being none, all in favor of the recommendation?
Aye.
Carrie, unanimous.
The next two recommendations, your worship, it's, they're on, they're, they're in the summary of recommendations, normally, items that are deferred, we would, we would not bring them forward, but in this case, we'll bring it forward. Received a crown land, two crown land applications numbered one five seven eight four, sorry, one five seven eight seven four, and one five seven eight seven six from Conward Enterprises. As staff is still gathering some information on those, I move that council support and approve the committee's recommendation to defer these matters for now.
It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Palmer, do I have a secondary?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Counselor Cran. Are there any questions?
I think we should probably say that until further information is collected pertaining to the application.
Yes.
So I assume that we, at, from the meeting, we gave direction from the committee to staff to go and collect the information. Right, so we'll bring it back to our next committee meeting, right?
That's right, staff's still gathering information, and at this point, move to defer.
Okay. Are there any further questions? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Carrie, unanimous.
We received a discretionary land use application from Mitchie Dumping, who hopes to establish a home-based business at thirty Learning Street for the purpose of selling online goods. I move that council support and approve the application with the following conditions: that a fire and life safety inspection as per NFPA one oh one be satisfactorily completed at the applicant's cost; that the applicant provide an application for a change of use at the applicant's cost; that use be in compliance with all of the town's development regulations with special reference to section fifty-four; that no direct retail sales occur at this property; and that the applicant obtain all required approvals from Service N L or any government agencies having jurisdiction.
It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Palmer, do I have a secondary? Seconded by Counselor Dyson Edmonds. Are there any questions on the recommendation brought forward? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Carrie, unanimous.
Thank you. We received a discretionary land use application from Ms. Anique Marku, who hopes to establish a home-based business at thirteen Grove Street for the purpose of setting up an office to provide occupational health and safety consultation services. I move that council support and approve the application with the following condition: that a fire and life safety inspection as per NFPA one oh one be satisfactorily completed at the applicant's cost; that the applicant provides an application for a change of use at the applicant's cost; that the use be in compliance with all of town's development regulations with special reference to section fifty-four; and that the applicant obtain all required approvals from Service N L or any government agencies having jurisdiction.
It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Palmer, do I have a secondary? Seconded by Counselor Becky. Are there any questions on the recommendation brought forward?
I just want to say that home-based businesses are delegate, nothing to do with this application, but it do lay out in the recommendation here what the regulations are, like fire inspection and so on, so, you know, that, some of that's pretty straightforward, and, you know, we can probably put it out there to the community a bit better, I guess, that from, you know, what's included in home-based businesses, but I just wanted to say that.
Section fifty-four, though, speaks directly to home-based businesses. The fire and life and safety inspection is a requirement under different regulations, so that's a requirement.
But there is conditions to follow, like, you know, the Service N L and, and the change and all that, and I don't know if it's clear to, to the community, what actually a home-based business is involved, but anyway, I just wanted to throw that out there because it came up earlier.
Are there any further questions? There being none, all in favor of the recommendation?
Aye.
Carrie, unanimous.
Thank you. We received a discretionary land use application from Mr. Brian Johnson, who hopes, who hopes to establish a home-based business at his residence at three Bennett Drive for the purpose of providing support through the engineering, consulting, and construction sectors. The use will be limited to an office only. I move that council support and approve the application with the following conditions: that a fire and life safety inspection as per NFPA one oh one be satisfactorily completed at the applicant's cost; that the applicant provide an application for a change of use at the applicant's cost; that the use be in compliance with all of the town's development regulations with special reference to section fifty-four; and that the applicant attain, obtain all required approvals from Service N L or any government agencies having jurisdiction.
Be moved by Deputy Mayor Palmer, seconded by Counselor Compton-Hobbs. Are there any questions on the recommendation brought forward? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Carrie, unanimous.
We received an application from variance for Mr. Patrick Matthews for his property at forty-two Loyola Street. Straightforward application, your worship, all the conditions will outline the details. I move that council support and approve the application with the following conditions: that the variance be granted for eight point five percent, changing the side yard width from two meters to one point eight three meters; that change be in compliance with all of the town's development regulations; and that any required approvals by other authorities having jurisdiction for this type of, be obtained, be obtained. And finally, that a location certificate be provided to the town once work is completed.
Be moved by Deputy Mayor Palmer, seconded by Counselor Cran. Are there any questions regarding the application brought forward?
Just to add that the town can provide up to a maximum of ten percent variance, so this is eight point five.
There being no further questions, all in favor of the recommendation?
Aye.
Carrie, unanimous.
Another recommendation regarding a variance, your worship, from Mr. Greg Bitzak, for his property at eight Grenfell Street. I move that council support and approve the application for variance with the following conditions: that the variance is for ten percent, changing the side yard width from three meters to two point seven meters; that the change be in compliance with the town's development regulations; that any required approvals by other authorities having jurisdiction for this type of product be obtained; and that a location certificate be provided to the town once the work is completed.
It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Palmer.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Counselor Dyson Edmonds. Are there any questions? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Carrie, unanimous.
That's it for me, your worship.
Thank you. We'll move on to Deputy Counselor Dyson Edmonds, economic development and public engagement.
Thank you, mayor. The Economic Development and Public Engagement Committee met on Tuesday, May the eleventh. Present was myself, Counselor Compton-Hobbs, Special Events Manager Waylon Williams, Director C D R Brenna Jahar, and Executive Assistant Kathy Eddy. The meeting was called to order at twelve sixteen, there were no errors or omissions in the, in the minutes. We had a, we had a meeting right out, right off the bat with representatives from the Labrador Canoe Regatta Association regarding their involvement with Gosling Park. We had a lot of discussion around that, and we have Brenna doing some research on the market value and associated costs of, of what potentially can happen down there, so we will be doing a follow-up on that for sure. Mr. Williams presented his report from Public Relations and Special Events, noting the increase in activity on town website and town Facebook page as well. Some of the updates that we got were with regards to the My Tax Bus Study. So Brenna met with Dr., well, virtually, with Dr. Habib Fariba and Hassan from Dalhousie along with some of the town staff, and Astapi Andrew and Aurora from the Sheshi Band Council. Dr. Habib presented the results of their research and, including some analysis and breasts of best practices and service options. This is an ongoing work in progress for sure. They presented their draft work plan and sought feedback from the town and the band council on the needs and the gaps, so we will be getting an update on that in the near future. He is also creating surveys and presentations for the public, which will be the next step. There was also a meeting with the Rapid Housing Initiative. New funding was announced through the April federal budget of about one point five billion with the aim of building forty-five hundred additional units for affordable housing. Those talks are ongoing as well. The, Brenna also had a call with Cyan French, with the, who is the Director of Provincial Parks N L, on the possibility of creating a provincial park in central Labrador. Of course, we know there's no money in the budget for that right now, but those talks are ongoing, and there's considerable interest in that as well. Reaching Home N L and the COVID Relief Fund, the committee met with and presented checks to the Housing Hub and Salvation Army for the first portion of the funds that we delivered under that project. There, there was virtual meetings with the N L H C partnership and the Gathering Place. As you know, we were scheduled to, to travel for, to have a meeting with, with them in St. John's, but of course, with the current alert levels and what's happening with, around the COVID, those were, those were put off until a better time, but in the meantime, Brenna's meeting. But in the meantime, Brenna's meeting virtually with those as well. Um, there was also a meeting with the COA and Colin O'Brien and working on a proposal, uh, on the trail development. Brenna, as, as Jackie noted earlier in her, her report as well, Brenna, Brenna's been doing some work uh, in the absence of the Director of CSR. So that is ongoing and there is a priority, uh, for the summer hiring, uh, for the recreation program. Uh, we were successful in getting the funding through the CSJ, uh, so we are able to hire ten students there. There was a composting meeting with the Multimaterial Stewardship Board, where they gave a presentation on the, to the regional group on the composting programs and challenges. Of course, uh, some things that are working and some things that aren't working. The Community Garden Grant, there was a request submitted to that for expansion and upgrades. Uh, Brenna also attended the MNL Conference, uh, Annual MNL Conference virtually. Uh, ongoing calls, of course, with municipalities, Newfoundland, Labrador. Also on, on with MP Von Jones on the federal budget, uh, and keeping us, uh, informed on that. There was a, uh, submission to the Jump Start Program for funds for kayaking and canoeing. Uh, we should hear back within the next couple of weeks on that. The Central Labrador Tourism Working Group is meeting on a wayfinding project to discuss, uh, regional signage, uh, removing old signs and creating a cohesive set of new signs for all the major roadways. Brenna also attended the YMCA update that we had with Jason Brown. Uh, Jason also give an update through the Labrador North Chamber of Commerce as well. Um, CMHE AGM was attended virtually. And the, uh, Atlantic Canada meeting, uh, she was part of the discussion on May the sixth on that. Uh, she's also working on the Reaching Home Outreach Coordinator Funding Application, um, for, uh, a contract for two years. Um, there's new application opportunities as well for federal money for the Green and Inclusive Community Buildings Fund, one point five billion over five years. Um, I know the, the department has put a lot of work into the last proposal that we, that we sent and hopefully, uh, the new, the new, the new ask that we have will have, uh, uh, more pull and, and hopefully we can get some money through that. Jackie also mentioned the participation challenge for receiving, for looking for the hundred thousand dollars, uh, the active investment. So, um, that's also in my report as well. But, uh, with that, I'll ask that my report be accepted as read and I do have one, one recommendation there.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by, uh, Councilor Dyson Edmonds, seconded by Councilor Compton-Hobbs. Are there any questions on the report?
Just on the Gosling Lake part, uh, a couple of us met with the Central, uh, Labrador Camping Association as well. So, uh, we have a meeting scheduled on Friday with all of council. Brenna has a meeting scheduled with all of council to update council of where we're to and how we should move forward. So, once we decide that, then, uh, we'll, uh, we'll, you know, we'll have further discussions with the Central Labrador Camping Association. And the Rapid Housing, uh, I've attended many, many meetings in the past month around, around housing. And, uh, it's still on the table that, uh, for, to move forward from, from the town's perspective is to revise our application with, uh, Rapid Housing to see if they may consider us in the future. Right now, there's no date announced of when they're going to release the applications for Rapid Housing. So, uh, Brenna's keeping an eye on that as well. So hopefully, uh, we, you know, we will, uh, if we got to reduce the numbers of twenty-five houses or whichever, every way we got to do it to, to see if we can be reconsidered for the next round of, uh, funds when it's announced, when the applications are called. Just wanted to say that.
Are there any further questions? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, carried unanimous. Thank you, Councilor Dyson Edmonds.
I got one, uh, recommendation there. Um, be resolved that the twelfth council of the Town of Happy Valley Goose Bay provide a letter of support to Healthy Waters Labrador Incorporated for their application to a COA for the Birch Island Conservation Area Phase Three Project.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by, uh, Councilor Dyson Edmonds, seconded by Councilor Compton-Hobbs. Uh, are there any discussion? I think, uh, has the letter been drafted?
Yes. It's a letter's draft. Just need your signature once approved here, if approved.
Okay, all right. So, uh, all in favor of the recommendation?
Aye.
Aye, carried. Okay, we'll move on to the next report and that would be, uh, Councilor Baiki with Finance Administration and Policy.
Thank you, your worship. The FAP Finance Administration Policy Committee met on May seventeen, twenty twenty-one. It was called to order at four forty-one P M. Those in attendance was myself and Chair Deputy Mayor Burke Permeyne, Councilor Lori Dyson Edmond, DFO Nadine McGolling, and Executive Assistant Kathy Eddy. Committee reviewed the April nineteen, twenty twenty-one minutes and there were no errors or omissions. Nadine McGolling stated that the twenty-eighteen audit is still ongoing and is hoped to be completed by June twenty twenty-one. Committee reviewed what other municipalities were doing with the use of municipal water being sold at stores. Committee reviewed delegation of issuance of orders, policy inspectors for the purpose of taxi regulations of the Town of Happy Valley Goose Bay. Policy A zero zero eight, process and record complaints also under review. Nadine McGolling stated that the applications are still being received for twenty twenty-one for low income relief. To date, we've received thirty-two applications for a hundred percent, twenty-eight applications for seventy-five percent, twenty-four applications for fifty percent, and sixteen applications for twenty-five percent. DFO gave her department an overtime report and stated that we are doing very well and are on budget. There being no further business, immediate adjournment at five thirty-two P M. Next meeting scheduled for June fourteen, twenty twenty-one at four forty-five. I now ask council to accept this report for record-keeping. The town council, public meeting dated May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one.
It's been moved by Councilor Baiki.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilor Compton-Hobbs. Are there any questions regarding her report? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, carried unanimous. Then you have recommendations to bring forward.
Yes, I do, your worship. The FAP Committee recommends that according to section four oh four, section six of the Municipalities Act Council, appoint the Director of Engineering, Randy Dillon, to issue orders under section four oh four of the Municipalities Act.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by, uh, Councilor Baiki, seconded by Councilor Cran. Are there any questions? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, carried unanimous.
Second one is eight zero zero three four, delegation of issuance of order. The FAP Committee recommends council add Director of Engineering, Randy Dillon, to the policy and remove former town manager Robert Andrews from the policy.
It's been moved by Councilor Baiki, seconded by Councilor Cran. Are there, uh, any questions? All in favor of the recommendation?
Aye.
Carried unanimous.
Last one is eight zero zero three five, taxi regulations implementation. The FAP Committee recommends council add Director of Engineering, Randy Dillon, to the policy and remove former town manager Robert Andrews from the policy.
It's been moved by Councilor Baiki, seconded by
I'll second that.
Councilor Dyson Edmonds. First, I think, uh, are there any questions? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, carried unanimous.
I have one more, Deputy Mayor, I'm sorry. The FAP Committee recommends council the issuance of permits for the use of fireworks under the noise regulation of the Town of Happy Valley Goose Bay be delegated to the following employees of the Town of Happy Valley Goose Bay; and furthermore, that former town manager Robert Andrews be removed from policy A zero zero three six and the policy amended accordingly, fire chief, community constable, and director of engineering.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Councilor Baiki, seconded by Councilor, uh, Compton-Hobbs. Are there any questions? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, carried unanimous. And you have now the one for the approval of checks.
And the, and submit the approval of checks in an amount of four hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars, seven cents.
It's been moved by Councilor Baiki, seconded by
I'll second that.
Councilor Cran. Are there any questions on the check run? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, carried unanimous. And we come down to the last part is council's forum and I start over here with, uh, yeah?
I think you start here.
Yes.
Not, not too much to say, your worship, just that it's been a fairly busy month, I think, for council and for the town. There's a lot of things on the go. We've been dealing with the groundwater situation and that's a priority for, for the town certainly. You know, I, I, I certainly sympathize with those that are affected and I wish there was an easy, easy solution to this. And we're, you know, there is no easy, easy solution and we just, we got to work our way through it and continue to push whatever way we got to do to try and alleviate these concerns and hopefully, and, and, and deal with a long-term solution. Um, the, the issue was brought up about safety regarding, uh, JP Forestry's operations and, and potentially, potentially driving large wood trucks through town seven days a week, one every thirty minutes to an hour, from my understanding. And, uh, you know, that's a big concern and, and I realize that Hamilton River Road is a provincial highway and, uh, and it was made quite clear to, uh, the eleventh council that, uh, the town has no say as to the use of that road. Uh, when we objected at the time of large, uh, wide load trucks coming through town without escorts and when Muskrat Falls was gearing up, uh, we saw it as a safety concern and the Minister of the Day indicated to us by a minute of council, government, I guess, minute of council, um, minute of, yeah, minute of cabinet, that, uh, the regulation was changed where the town would no longer be sought its approval for large loads coming through the community. I, I disagree with it then. I still disagree with it because we're going to have a lot of work happening in our community i- this summer, particularly with Kellin Drive, uh, reconstruction. Uh, that road is going to be, uh, shut down at times. There's going to be traffic disruptions there. If we're going to have large wood trucks coming through every thirty minutes to an hour, um, all hours of the day, that's going to be a disruption to our community. And hopefully, hopefully some solution can be found here. South Branch Road was proposed back when Muskrat Falls was gearing up as I think it's an option that really needs to be considered again. And hopefully, we can get to some common ground here that, that these people can feel comfortable that this operation's not going to be, uh, adversely affect the community too much. Other than that, uh, your worship, uh, looking forward to having further discussions with, uh, the urban chicken. I won't call them farmers. I'll probably call them chicken keepers. Um, and, uh, some roost, well, um, chickens, hens, and roosters. Um, but I think we should also have further discussions as well with respect to bee regulations in the town because if council's not aware, there are, there are still, there are a number of people in town that are keeping bees as well. Uh, so that's, that's a discussion that we need to have and probably reach out to those. Some of me, some may even be the same individuals that have backyard, uh, chickens. So I think that we need to have that discussion as well when we're looking at these regulations. Uh, because I think that's the way you're going to see more applications come down, down the road for these types of operations. Yeah, I, I'll, I'll just leave it at that, your worship. Uh, you know, I wanted to talk a little bit about, uh, the town's development regulations and, you know, the development regulations are there for a reason. Like, nobody's above the regulations. No member of council's above the regulation. No member of public is above the regulations. And, you know, we're bound by them, whether we like them or not. And, uh, so I think it's important that, that council's aware of that and the public is aware of it as well. That the new, the regulations that are in place now, um, we approved them, I believe it was in eight, uh, was it in?
February.
February? Yeah, yeah, about three months ago. So the regulations are in place. Uh, there was extensive public consultation around those regulations. And, uh, you know, not everyone's going to agree with them, but they're there for a reason and it keeps everybody on a level playing field and, and nobody's above it. So I just wanted to make that point. Thank you, your worship. Uh, that's it for me for this night. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Cran.
Yeah, I don't have a whole lot to say. I'd just, uh, just like to, uh, offer condolences to Joe's family. As I'm sure everybody around the council table does as well. And it's been a rough, uh, a rough four years, almost four years since we've taken office. And we just lost Joe. I lost my daughter-in-law. And of course, we lost our mayor. We're dead at the gates. And it's been, it's been a rough go. Just like to, uh, wish our PR man there well and a happy birthday. He'll be celebrating his birthday tomorrow. And, uh, the only reason I know that, he shares his birth, my uncle, are here in town and he shares the same birthday. So there'll be a big party up in the park, I guess, tomorrow. And I also like to ask God's blessing on the Montreal Canadiens for tonight as we take to the ice with the Toronto Maple Leafs and hopefully we'll pull out a win. And that's it for me. Stop laughing, Lord.
Councilor Dyson Edmonds.
You're going to be a sad boy tomorrow, Sean.
Probably not. No, not, not.
Um, looking forward to, uh, to the town cleanup. A lot of inquiries about that. So it's good to know that that's, uh, that's coming up in, in the next little while. Um, I got to give a shout out to, uh, DJ. I've gotten at least a dozen, uh, messages and phone calls about, uh, him in the position that he's in and the good work that he's doing. Um, I got, I actually got stopped in the store by a, by an older couple who wanted to know the name of the young fella who was running the grant. So, uh, kudos to DJ. He seems to be off to a good start over there and looking forward to some progress on some of, some of the issues that the town has been, uh, has been pointing out. The only other thing I, I guess we would note would, of course, be, um, losing Joe. It was a hard month for the family for sure. Um, beautiful funeral service, uh, at the Anglican Church and, you know, thinking about the family in, in the days, the days ahead for sure. Um, that's about it for me.
Thank you, uh, Councilor Dyson Edmonds. Councilor Compton-Hobbs?
Um, yeah, too. I, I just want to send condolences to Joe's family. Uh, I've been speaking with, uh, some of them the past few days and, uh, hard days ahead for sure. But, uh, you know, uh, it's been a, it's been a sad month and a busy month. We've had a lot of meetings this month and we got a lot more coming up in, on our schedule in the next month. So it's busy time for the council for sure, even though we're winding down on our, uh, term. Uh, the new municipal elections will be in September, but it's certainly busy times, uh, in our last months with lots of meetings. Um, it's nice to see that the recreation is getting back on track. Modern soccer seems to be going well. There's been no issues. And we're hoping to see some, uh, uh, ball leagues back on track too. So it's nice to see that we're trying to get, you know, some recreation back in the community slowly, but, uh, certainly, uh, brighten up, you know, the summer months for some people who enjoy the, uh, recreational activities. Um, development regulations, uh, they're in stone, but they're not approved through the province. So I keep hearing that, uh, that, you know, that we approved them in February, but they're not in effect until the province approves them. So I'd like some, uh, clarification on that from, uh, from the town engineer at our next development planning meeting that, uh, we're getting to, you know. We were told at the last meeting that, that, that they're officially approved through council, but we're waiting for, uh, any revisions from the province. So if you could, uh, just note that and give us a, you know, the right information at the next meeting. Uh, it'd be beneficial for, for all of us. Um, yeah, and, uh, I'm looking forward to working with the chicken owners, I'll call them, and, uh, hopefully we can come up with a solution for everybody. That's it for me.
Thank you, uh, Councilor Baiki.
Thank you, your worship. And I just wanted to wish my sincere condolences to Delly and her family and Joe's, uh, on Joe's passing. Uh, he was definitely dedicated and always been there for the residents and always had the best interests around the chamber. I will miss his great smile and I will miss his presence at Chamber Commerce Council, Chamber Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I want to give a, uh, hats off to our new staff. I know I know I've had some dealings with DJ, and the reports coming from the staff over at the garage scene is very favorable. And, you know, we have a new animal control officer, and, you know, she's out around town doing a good job. Let there be no mistake that Joe was on, Joe's family was on our mind for the last couple of weeks, and, you know, he sat in the chamber here with us, and I guess, you know, maybe we all need sometimes to just take a deep breath and move back a little bit and remind ourselves as to how short, you know, life can be. And I know that Councilor Cran, what you've gone through as well. So to Nellie and to Joe's boys and his grandchildren, you know, you know, he will be remembered for a long time to come. Lot of good comments around town from the sanding. The crews was out with our sand sweepers, and they said, we watched them put everything on the road, and we were saying, oh my God, what a mess they're going to make. And along come the vacuum truck and took everything off the road, and it was smooth as pie. So it's working very well. JP Forestry, we're calling for meetings with them, and it is the ideal thing to use the South Branch Road. The last thing I want to say is that, the groundwater. And there's talks of what happened in the past, and, you know, we can't dwell on that. But we have a short time left on our term. And I think it's the goal of all of us that we find a permanent solution to the groundwater that families are experiencing. Again, this morning, in the home of a couple that heartbroken. And, you know, it reminds us that, you know, Mother Nature and how strong it can be, but we need to find a way to fix the problem permanently. So I want to remind them again that we are working to find a permanent solution to the problem so that it never happens again. With that, I'll call for a meeting to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Moved by Councilor Compton-Hobbs, seconded by Councilor Dyson Edmonds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carry unanimous, meeting adjourned.